Things to do at the Garden Club in their efforts.
Nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty at Railroad Park.
Nineteen?
Nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty. And spent a couple of nights since last week. Marty McDermott, thanks for being here tonight. Spent some time, Marty, not gracious enough to give me some time out of his schedule. We met with a couple of candidates for the Planning and Zoning Board, and those meetings went very well. So that is the mayor report. We'll move on to the Alderman report. Alderman Blackie. Okay, so I attended the Planning and zoning meeting.
I attended.
Main health conference. PUD, Plan Unit Development. It was thoroughly discussed. The best, best way to describe the PUD I'm gonna go with was the landing at Branson is the PUD. If a person wanted to get involved in their city government, planning and zoning committee, I'll be applying to be. Alderman and Paulson.
No, no reports tonight.
Alderman Elder.
The only thing I wanted to say is that, you know, we're voting tonight on the election results. And it's great that four hundred and sixty people came out in our wards to vote for Alderman, but it's really sad that that's less than one percent of the residents of Odessa. So I encourage, we, you know, if you wanna make change and you want things different, you need to get out and vote. So I wish we had more that had come out, that's all.
Alderman's daughter.
I got them.
And for the last time. Alderman Kerry.
Bittersweet. Again, as I've said before, and Donna just reiterated, we did have one ward that had competition. I have congratulated Bruce in the past, and I wish him the best. It has also been my honor, it's been my type of work, been able to serve for two years. I've gotten to know the city staff and the managers and department heads. You're a wonderful crew, just keep doing what you're doing. And just basically keep the ship going.
Thank you, sir. City administration.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Alderman. I'll go ahead and get started with our Parks Department. T-ball signups ended yesterday. We are allowing for any late registrations if anyone missed that date. Soccer will end on May third, and then we will kick things off with baseball and softball with the younger kids. And with the younger kids beginning May twelfth. For the pool, we have JCI. They've removed the old pool pump and are currently working on the replacement. And the new pool slide pad will arrive on May fifth. Volunteer David DeCamp will be repainting the basketball courts and pickleball courts for us. And in the meantime, while those are being painted, those, those two courts will be temporarily closed. So we'll post about that and everything, when the timing of that's going to be. We've got our maintenance crew hired for the season, and we're planning to hire just a couple more concession workers. Then we'll be all set. And then to reiterate, the pool will open on Memorial Day and will close April seventeenth. For the wastewater department, we received our new camera, the one that will scope the different lines. That was a part of the CIP project. One neat thing about it is it also includes a locator. So in the future, we'll be able to take that location data and put that into our new GIS mapping that we'll have shortly. Mostly for the department, just catching, catching up on system maintenance and some spring cleaning at both plants and our sixteen pump stations. And then ongoing, we'll be processing solids. We're also working to obtain some quotes for the north plant pump station project, which is currently in need of repair. For the police department, we have a lot of training coming up. You'll notice that it's definitely training season for all of us. So with the police department, we'll be sending two to crime scene investigations school. We'll be sending one to a drug interdiction course in Iowa. And one employee will be attending the investigators conference and the financial crime school. And we will be working to get one more officer, or if you wanna count it as two, but Officer Bell and Radar will be trained for the peer support training. So that'll bring us to a total of four trained within the department. And we have, Josh Thompson has a crisis leadership seminar for FEMA coming up soon. Just a little heads up that next week is Public Recognition Week. So we'll be doing things for our, some small things for our employees to show our appreciation. The week after that is National Police Week. And the law enforcement day that we do with the DARE students across the county, that will be held on May fourteenth in Hakenzville. We're also working on some planning and discussions for our national night out, which typically happens the weekend of puddle jumpers. We'll also be having, the police department puts on, Chief Thompson puts on a fish fry for all employees the weekend of the rodeo, or the week of the rodeo, so that will be coming up soon. We've hired Galene as our code enforcement animal control officer, and she's really kicking things off with her position. We'll be introducing her at our May twelfth Board of Alderman meeting. But in her first month, she, we have two houses that have been demoed and possibly another one in progress. We have a total of forty-five active code enforcement cases with thirty of those opened by Galene and eighteen of them closed by Hakenzville. We are, our programs that we have going, we're folk, those forty-five are focused on the wrecked or junk vehicles, tall weeds and grass, and then a few of those were some structural, structural, structural code issues. And we're still moving towards going live with our public code soft, codes software launch in June. We've been continuing to meet with the outlet mall as much as possible, and they are starting to make some progress. They've made some stucco or facade repairs. And they are working to hire an asphalt company to make some repairs, including larger pairs and like crack seal repairs. And I did notice while I was out there today that they've done some tree trimming as well. So they are making progress towards making sure their, their property is maintained. We also are working to upgrade our phone system, which has recently been purchased by another company. So it's currently under review by attorneys, and we'll come to you at our next board meeting, hopefully. Another thing we've been in discussions about is possibly creating an inspections hotline for those who may have sewer repairs or, or new builds. So we're working to see if we can implement that with either our new phone system or the Doppler system. And for the electric department, we have completed all of our safety inspections for this year. We're working on moving forward with the boring of a line that we're moving from overground to underground. And we've, we have a new transformer installed for Advanced Industries. The breaker from our major power outage we had a few years back, that is getting ready to be installed. There will be no power outages needed for that. And our two new apprentices will be enrolled in the MPA apprentice program soon. They are also, the electric department's also working with the rodeo committee on their annual improvements to the, to the site at Dire Park. They're also working with our Parks Department that is currently in need of looking at different options for the baseball lighting and potentially making an improvement or seeking grant funding to, to make that happen, so. We also have a tree trimming bid on our CIP this year, so we'll be working to get those bid documents out. And then handling the increased amount of fiber locate requests with Socket currently under construction. Those locate requests trickle down to our crews and bog them down to an extent, so managing those. From the city clerk's office, she's been working with getting new employees in and salary adjustments in, especially for the Parks Department, bringing those, those salaries up to minimum wage for the year. And making sure that the end of year unused vacation is cleaned up for each of our employees. She's also been working to help with, help complete and get out the GIS mapping bid, which should be going out this week. Some upcoming events for city, for the city is on May seventh, we'll be having our health fair for all of our employees. And the citywide garage sale is also this weekend. She's also working on preparing the annual fireworks permit in preparation for the Fourth of July. And like you guys mentioned, many of our elected officials attended the law firm training and city staff on Friday. For city admin, we have extended a contingent offer for the finance director position. So we're excited to be fully staffed, getting back fully staffed at city hall. I do have a meeting with MoDOT tomorrow to discuss some items with our tap project. So I'm excited to see the outcome of that meeting. And we did have, you guys probably have noticed in your emails, but we had a little utility billing mishap this week, so, or last week. Working with ENCODE, somehow the rates got entered in incorrectly, so the bills went out with the wrong rate. That primarily only is affect, it's not primarily, it is only affecting our commercial residents. So the bills that they would have received on Friday were incorrect. The bill that came out today, that is the correct utility billing. So everyone else that's not commercial, they received multiple emails with their, with their utility bill in it. So if you're not a commercial customer, you have plenty of, of bills sent to you. If you are a commercial customer, please only, only use the last one that we sent today.
I had a question, is that affecting ones that are mailed?
No, so we haven't, we haven't mailed anything out, and Andy was going through and reprinting the commercial ones and pulling those out, so.
Okay.
She's doing that mailing by hand, so they should be all good to go, but most importantly, commercial customers, it's only about two hundred and fifty customers impacted by that, so. Okay. And lastly, I will be attending the Missouri City Managers Association training this week from Wednesday to Friday. That's all.
Questions for Donna. Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
Our next up is the public hearing on the Plan Unit Calendar, Bill number twenty twenty-five dash twelve. We'll start the public hearing at seven fifteen. If anybody wants to speak to the public here. Being none, we will stop the public hearing at seven nineteen. Public comments, we have any public comments tonight? There are none, we move on, there's the old business. We'll move on to new business. This is Bill number twenty twenty-five dash eleven. Introduction and readings of Bill number twenty twenty-five dash eleven of proposed ordinance accepting the results of the April eighth, twenty twenty-five general municipal election as provided by the Lafayette County Clerk. I would take that motion to approve the first reading. I make a motion to approve the first reading of Bill number twenty twenty-five dash eleven. General Municipal Election Candidate Results.
I'll second.
Motion, I second. Any discussion? There is none. And we'll move on to the second reading.
Yeah.
Yes, all in favor?
All in favor. Five zero motion, Chair. All right, now moving on to the second reading. Introduction and readings of Bill number twenty twenty-five dash eleven of proposed ordinance accepting the results of the April eighth, twenty twenty-five general municipal election as provided by the Lafayette County Clerk, second reading.
I'll make a motion that we approve Bill number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, the second reading, and approve the bill as an ordinance for the general municipal election candidate results.
We have our motion in the second, roll call.
Alderman Kerry.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Eller.
Yes.
Starr.
Yeah.
Plackety.
Yes.
Motion Kerry, given ordinance number thirty-one fifty-one.
And I will take a matter to recognize Board of Alderman Bothler for your performance and dedication to the city of Odessa. So I'll point the board, and we're gonna make notes, John.
And take it out of it. Oh, gosh.
I didn't go a game that much, wait.
That's funny.
I go that way or there?
Um. You're gonna go there.
There.
All right. Yes, see here. Now we adjourn and sign die, the meeting will be recessed briefly for a presentation and for the oath of office of the newly elected officials. Take a motion to adjourn to sign die.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to sign die.
All in, all in favor? Five zero, we're adjourned to sign.
Okay, so I will follow by warrant, one, two, and three. Carla. Listen.
I state your name.
Hi, Carla Paulson.
Do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications for the office of Alderman Ward one, as prescribed by law.
Do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications for the office of Alderman Ward one, as prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
Provisions of all laws of the state affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the city of Odessa and faithfully to me, myself, and others.
And the ordinances of the city of Odessa and faithfully to me, myself, and others. Plackety.
I state your name. I might, I think, do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications for the office of Alderman Ward two, as prescribed by law.
Sowmely swear that I possess qualifications for the office.
That I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri.
That I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
Provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the city of Odessa and faithfully to me, myself, and others.
And the ordinances of the city of Odessa and faithfully to me, myself, and others.
Sowmely swear that I possess qualifications for the office of Alderman Ward three, as prescribed by law.
Do solemnly swear that I possess qualifications for the office of Alderman Ward three, as prescribed by law.
That I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the city of Odessa and faithfully to me, myself, and others.
And the ordinances of the city of Odessa and faithfully to me, myself, and others.
I'll be glad.
So I'll be glad.
Merci. Thank you.
We have our fiftieth wedding anniversary next week.
Next day.
And we're going to party next week.
Well, congratulations. Thank you.
All this meeting in order. Roll call.
Alderman Starr.
Here.
Plackety.
Here.
Witsit.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Eller.
Mayor.
Mayor Barner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Start this new quorum off with a proclamation, couple of proclamations, the first is Local Government Week. Whereas local governments in Missouri are making important decisions that affect the lives of all Missourians. And whereas local governments are the level of government closest to the people. And whereas local governments include city councils, Board of Alderman, county commissions, school boards, among others. And whereas local governments are the ultimate expression of grassroots democracy. And whereas local governments play an essential role in the quality of life in Missouri communities. And now therefore I, Brian D. Barner, Mayor of the city of Odessa Missouri, do hereby name May fifth through the ninth as twenty twenty-five as Local Government Week in Odessa, Missouri, and herd all Missourians. To join me in recognizing local governments as they serve their communities. In which where I have on appearing to set my hand and call the seal of the city of Odessa, Missouri, to be affixed this twenty-eighth day of April, the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five. Next proclamation is for the National Day of Prayer. Whereas the National Day has been a part of our country's heritage since it was declared by the first Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five. And whereas the seventy-fourth annual observance for the National Day of Prayer will be held May first, twenty twenty-five, as mandated by both Houses of Congress and by our President. And whereas leaders of our nation have relied upon the power of prayer throughout American history. And whereas we as a nation and a state give thanks for the freedoms we enjoy and pray that the city of Odessa and its people will continue to be blessed and protected from those who threaten democracy. And whereas Isaiah twenty-five, verse one, which says, "Lord, you are my God. I will exalt you and praise your name for your perfect faithfulness. You have done wonderful things, things planned long ago." And whereas this year's National Day of Prayer theme is faithfulness. And whereas it is appropriate that we acknowledge God as sovereign and call upon him in prayer. Now therefore I, Brian D. Barner, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Odessa, Missouri, I do hereby proclaim May first, twenty twenty-five as the Odessa National Day of Prayer. And in which where I have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Odessa, Missouri, to be affixed this twenty-eighth day of April, the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five. Next order of business is electing an acting president of the Board, Odessa Board of Alderman, otherwise known as the Mayor Pro Tim, to serve a one-year term. And I would entertain nominations for the motion to approve. Donna has done an excellent job as the Mayor Pro Tim.
She might as well stay there. You might as well stay there. I don't mind her.
Are there any other nominations? Nikki had nominated Donna. No other nominations, then I would take a motion to approve Donna, Alderman Donna Eller as our Mayor Pro Tim or the acting president of the Odessa Board of Alderman, serve a one-year term.
I knew that we, I liked on us, or Mayor Pro Tim, for one year.
Second. The motion second, all in favors. Five zero, motion, Chair. And now we need to have the approval of the Department of Finance Committee.
Yes. We need one from each board.
Yes, we need one from each board.
Do you want?
I'd like to stay on if I could.
I would like you to stay on if you could.
Okay.
Well, we got Ward, Ward two taken care of.
Nine in different. No, we're right again.
All right, you've got our second, and now Ward three. Alderman Kerry has been on the Finance Committee. If you'd like to stay that way, it certainly can, because I'm here to defend itself. You would like to serve on it, all right, well, there will be no opposition to that, so. We have our three candidates. We have Alderman Eller, we have Alderman Paulson, and we have Alderman Witsit. Nominated the Finance Committee, Alderman Traeger.
Oh, we need a motion.
A motion to approve. A motion to approve. Now, need a motion to approve.
I knew that we approved what I used. Carla, Donna, and Bruce, be on lights.
Okay, that's second. Motion in second, all in favor? Five zero, motion carries. Congratulations to the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Do the introduction and readings of Bill number twenty twenty five dash twelve. Of proposed ordinance approving chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Odessa, Missouri. Relating to the planned unit developments. This will be most of the first reading of.
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of Bill number twenty twenty five dash twelve, chapter fifty, planned unit developments.
We have a motion in second, the first reading, all in favor? All in favor? Okay, yes, on the first reading, five zero, first reading is approved. Now we'll have a discussion. This is how it's going to work. I feel, I would be remiss if I didn't mention to the board that Shawna and I heard through email from Alderman Carrigan. And he voiced his opinion that he would like to postpone the vote on the ordinance. And you need to take that into consideration. We're gonna, after discussion, we're gonna have Marty McDermott come up, he's gonna talk, and Shawna is gonna also assist with the discussion. After the discussion, if it's still, if anyone feels like they want to postpone, or they want to do a subsidiary motion, they may make that. I will pause briefly before I go to the second reading. If you want to make a subsidiary motion to postpone, or whatever you want to do, make it the influence, okay? If there is no motion, I will continue on to the second reading. Understood? Okay, so with the discussion, Marty, you know, come on up, please. You sitting there, but come up.
I'll let you go first, Marty. I'll follow behind.
Marty has been the chairman of the Funding Zoning Committee for a long time.
Twenty, did I say twenty?
Twenty-four years.
So, and he has graciously, he did our, accepted our invitation to come tonight to kind of give his two cents about what he thinks about the planning, uh, unit developments and just some insight from himself.
Well, I've received a couple of phone calls about it. I thought it was quite interesting. One of the statements was, so this is just gonna be another rubber stamp? And the answer to that is no, it's not a rubber stamp. To get a PUD, you've got to jump through some hoops and hoops. But bear in mind, it is a concept. You submit a concept plan. It's got to fit with the city, got to fit the location in the city. The infrastructure's got to be there to support it. It can adversely affect the neighborhood that it's going in. Or the impact on these services provided to that neighborhood. Otherwise, as been the history of the Funding Zoning Commission, we're probably not going to approve anything. That the negative impact on the citizens. Or our community. Pretty much, they don't support it. And they would not support that planning concept. Doesn't mean you can't go take your plan back and revise it and bring it back for a revision. But all it's saying is it gives a developer an opportunity to make a planned unit development. And then sell it. But it's got to get past that commission and, and I, and I, I'll speak for this, they're not easy to get past. They don't, be able to live their entire lives here. And they don't just want to rubber stamp, they don't just take things, oh, it's good. Can I leak my statement about, I have a statement that I've heard for years and I hate. And it says, well, it's good enough for Odessa. I would be inclined to use this. Is it good for Odessa? Because there's a lot of stuff that's going on that it isn't good enough for Odessa. I'm sorry. And part of that commission's job is to right, right many of those wrongs. We had the RF on with the support of the council. So the planned unit development comes in here to say, you used Branson as an example. I would use one that we have currently. We could, we could make this work for it. And that's a nineteen twelve school. There's potential that they could put in some buildings there. That this would be an ideal place to put a PUD, the planned unit development. Was it good to neighborhood? Are the services there to support it? Water, sewer, electric? And is it going to have positive impact or negative impact on its neighborhood? It's not that just necessarily the whole community, but the neighborhood as well. And I think that's important to look at. And that's what this city commission is trying to do as well over the years of all of this. Is it good enough for Odessa? Does it have a negative impact on the neighborhood? Or the city? If it's got a negative impact on either of those, the planning commission probably isn't going to approve. But give you an example. Let's say that I wanted to put in. Forty highway and Johnson Drive. I wanted to put in a. Plan development where I've got commercial. Retail on the ground level. And then I decided I want apartments on a second level. That is a prime example of a planned unit development. It's mixed zones. In one. So it has to get approved. Why? Because it's a zone of its own. So it has to go to public hearing. Has to meet the criteria prior to coming to us. And then the commission can maybe say, no, we don't like it. But let's say it gets that point and they say, okay, is the infrastructure there to support it? And when we get the support back or, or we get the information back from cities, our city folks? No, not, then it's probably not going to get approved. You got a plan to make the services over there better, include that in your plan and come back and see us. But it's not just to rubber stamp, and, and I think that's critical because. Too many people think. Things just go through and nobody, nobody really thinks, and I know that's. I've seen it personally, so I know it's not true.
Good question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not, you guys spent quite a bit of time in different workshops working on this, is that correct?
Well, we've spent a lot of years working to this point. What we're trying to. This came to us, comes up to us because we're currently working in our zones to say what can be built in the zone, okay? Currently, if I want to build a house. Out beside the Ritchie Brothers in an industrial area, I can do it. Does that make sense? Absolutely not.
Is that that cumulative zoning?
That's cumulative zoning. Here's more of that, good enough for Odessa. We're losing commercial zoning, zoned properties to multifamily. And we have a, a large map, you ought to take a serious look at it. That commercial. Property is dwindling, and it's not because there's commercial property being built on it. It's because we're building apartments, duplexes, fourplexes on that commercial problem. I could, I could say this, and you, you all would probably agree or not, I don't know, but. If I want more tax money, it's better if I get commercial property.
Or industry.
Or industry. We are a bedroom community. Pretty soon, the needs of the community are going to outgrow our tax base of residential housing. If it isn't there now. And if we're going to continue to put. Housing on commercial property, that's not a good plan. And so what we're trying to do in this process is eliminate that. Could I build residential on commercial property? Maybe, it's conditioned. Maybe that's a twenty unit apartment. Okay? But it's got to meet the residential requirements and not the commercial requirements, and they're different. And that's why people want to build that. Multi-family or their apartment building in a commercial, because it's got different setbacks. Okay, that's not good. And that's what we've been fighting. So when you, when you look at planned development, that's just what it is. This is unit development. It's a planned unit development. It's for a specific site. For specific. Types of uses. In an area, the area's got to be able to handle it. Without it being detrimental to the area. And I know there are folks that, hey, like it's. I'd say this, if I was a real estate agent, I'd be opposed to it. Because number one, I'm coming here and sell, and you can build whatever you want to want. Now you can't put Joe's Bar and Grill in the residential neighborhood, because it's not allowed. But I could build a four hundred and fifty home residential unit in an industrial apartment, because it is one. We thought, we understand how that makes sense. It really doesn't. Really does.
Are there any questions for Marty? Alderman Wilson?
I, I kind of see two issues that we need to deal with. Number one is a planned unit development right for Odessa.
Yes.
Okay, number two, structuring a good ordinance, assuming that we decide that it is right for Odessa. Going through and looking at other community ordinances, there's a huge difference between our proposed ordinance that we received. And what other communities have in their looks. Other communities seem to have. Structured what qualifies for the concept plan. They, they've stipulated that, for example, it has to be a minimum of two acres. They stipulated that we will not, it has to be in an area where infrastructure exists. The city will not pay for the infrastructure upgrade, but the contractor can pay for it. They've stipulated if it's in an R one area, the density can be no greater than four units per acre. If it's in an R two, it can be no greater than eight units. If it's in an R three, it can be no greater than sixteen units. Ours is what I would refer to as an open range. We're open to negotiating anything. We, we've not outlined what's acceptable. Which to me is, is not fair to our negotiators. It's not fair to the, to the developer. Because there's no framework. They don't know going into it what their limits are. And then with the planning and zoning. And the bad guys, they have to kick it back and say, no, we're not going to accept it. And that makes them seem pretty arbitrary, their decisions. They can have a developer say, well, you're not fair to me. You let this guy do it, but you're not letting me do it. Why? That's, that's not fair to your playing favorites. Should those things be in the ordinance, do you think?
Maybe, that's up to, that's up to this board. Personally.
And I do, I do want to mention, you said nineteen twelve building would be an ideal place for it, and I agree. And I did talk to Adam, and Adam does have a need for it, but. I want to add what Adam commented about the PUD. Something like a PUD needs a lot of consideration before approval and implementation. And I'd rather it take a while and be done right than hammer something through that may be flawed. Which I, I think that's pretty admirable, and he, he does have an immediate need to do something to tell us to take our time and do it right.
It, it would be nice if he comes speak to the something commission too. You know, in twenty-four years. I tell you, there's probably in all of those years and all of public hearings, all totaled, I would speculate less than sixty people come. Total. Just feeling. That's, that troubles. We've had people come to the commission meetings to speak that don't even live in the city. They want to speak because of an issue that affects them outside of the city. Does it need work? That's, that's for you all to decide. It doesn't mean it can't come back to the zoning commission for the recommendation from this board. To do it and tweak it. But please, if you do that, would you please give us some recommendations? Things that you ought to, you would, you would think you would want to see in it, as things that come back to us with knowing. And where do we go?
Were you given any other ordinances to be carried here?
No, not really. Not really. We're done with that. We're done with that.
Thank you.
I would agree with you, Bruce. Because quite frankly, I had a look at what it was, what all it meant, and it was pretty easy to find. Sedalia's, there's some rough information just from equipment research that is very detailed. You know, I don't, I don't think it needs to be so detailed that we, we hinder ourselves. But yet I think there needs to be some structure, maybe more than what I see and what's presented.
In reference to like how many acres, is that what I'm hearing? Is that the issue?
Well, there's, there's one, the, the cities that, that I pulled up, and they were just the first four that. That appeared in the legal search when I put in planned unit development ordinances. Sedalia, West Plains, Maplewood, Rainville. Okay, I, and I'm assuming ours is modeled after Oak Grove because it was very similar.
And Harrisonville.
There's one of them that said it had to be a minimum size of two acres. And there's one that I believe said it had to be a minimum size of twenty acres. So they range all of those.
So one thing that Jeff mentioned is that a lot of times they'll put the minimum requirement on whenever it's structured as an overlay as opposed to its own zoning district. So, I mean, there's, there's a very limited amount of parcels in Odessa that would be greater than, you know, two acres. And ours is its own zone. So at the time of, you'd submit your concept and then you'd submit. You know, two acres and ours is its own zone, so at the time of, you'd submit your concept and then you'd submit your final. And at that point, you're, you're moving from whatever your previous zone was, if you were R one, R two, R three. To P U D, P U D zone, so it's own, it's its own zone and not an overlay.
Yeah, it's not an over.
And I, I think Sedalia's would say, by the way, it's not an attorney.
So just to, I can speak to this part.
Be my guest.
Marty, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So for the ordinance structure of this, um. You know, it's. The, the main reason why we, we did go back and forth, do we want to put certain criteria in or do we not want to put certain criteria in? Some of the criteria that was put in there was saying like. Setbacks on the side can go back to zero or setbacks in the front can go back seventy-five percent or whatever it was. We were afraid that if we did that, that they would just push for the maximum as opposed to coming to us with. What makes sense from their, from an engineering perspective and what they truly knew. We were afraid that if we did, if we put those setback requirements and those stipulations, they would start with the maximum no matter what. So we felt like it would make a little bit more sense to leave it open-ended. So they would come to us with a more accurate explanation of their needs and then allow staff to work with them. So a big part about this process and why it can sometimes be time-consuming is because. You go through kind of hand in hand with staff determining what makes sense from our perspective and the developer's perspective. And then it goes to P N C. So that was a little bit of the reasoning and how we got to the ordinance that we did. Um, just an explanation of. What, what the P U D is and, and the pros and cons just to add on to what Marty said, so. There's typically two scenarios when you would use a P U D. And one of those is when you want to do mixed use development, if you want to have. You know, residential and retailer, whatever the combination is, if you want to put two different uses or more than two different uses in one parcel. This is when you would, you would use that. Then, then the second option is when. If there's a, like a large quantity of variances, like the setbacks, like I mentioned before. If they're wanting, you know, the design that they've come up with, it doesn't quite fit for. The setbacks that we require for our code today or for whatever that zone is that they're currently in. This allows them a way to counter our code, but do it in a way that's kind of give and take, so. In, in exchange for. You know, your, our setback requirement is ten feet from the side, but they need seven. In exchange for that, then they need to provide something that's bettering the, the development project. Whether that be a park or a playground or. A walking trail or whatever it may be, but the, the thing is, is that they're going to provide something in exchange for the betterment of the community, for the betterment of the development. Beyond what our code of ordinances would currently ever require. Did I answer a little bit of your, your thoughts on the development of the ordinance? And this pretty much is, uh. Oak Grove, pretty, this is kind of mirrored after what Oak Grove is currently doing.
So our attorneys wrote springs as well, did we say?
Slightly, but not as much, theirs is a lot more in depth, but yes, um. So our attorneys wrote the ordinance and then consulted with staff to determine what we wanted in, what we wanted out, that kind of thing. The other thing I wanted to add to, sorry, real quickly to Marty's comments. Uh, he did talk about the work that the planning and zoning is doing right now to dive into the different zoning uses and where they've kind of fit, where they slot in. Uh, I just wanted to add that this is separate than cumulative zoning. This is in addition to. Our code of ordinances, not. In replace of cumulative zoning, not, it has to have cumulative or it doesn't have to have cumulative to have this. You can have a P U D and provide that flexibility in our zoning with or without cumulative. This is in addition to, and in reality, a completely separate topic.
Own zone.
It's its own zone.
So, um. Just for clarification, could you? Explain, I, so I have, there's a pre-application conference in, in the current progress quarters. And that's where you said you kind of work hand in hand with the developer.
Yeah, the pre-application, yeah, the pre-application con- conference or meeting would be with our community development quarter, coordinator. Myself, our different utility directors and the, the applicant. Um, our city engineers would also be invited to that meeting. And if necessary, or if we have, know we're going to anticipate any questions, we will include Mark from I V T S. We, we try to include everyone that possibly can be in there, a lot of the questions in a pre-application meeting are around the site itself. So that's really where our engineers come into play. They know our code just as well as we do, if not more, they can help us with those setbacks and what's required and then we. Consult with our, our utility directors to make sure that the utilities can be provided, what it would take to get utilities, if not, and, and so on and so forth. But at that pre-application, they're, they're coming to us with. Even a, a higher level even of a concept plan and they're, they're proposing to us what they're wanting to do. And then we're working with them and wiggling out things that may need to be kind of worked upon or negotiated, if you will, or, you know, we can say. You know, you want. You want to cut back the requirement of parking stalls by fifty stalls, like. There's no sense even bringing that to planning and zoning, we would work through them with each of those. Um, steps and conversations and then they're going to work with their engineers to present, uh, present that concept.
So then, once. That part is over with, then they would. Submit a concept plan, okay, and then that plan is reviewed by.
Planning and zoning, okay, and I believe the Board of Alderman as well.
It's a recommendation, the planning commission is a recommendation to the board of Alderman, yes.
So I didn't see that in here, so that's what I was. Maybe I'm used to. I think I found it, I found it right there. Okay.
Sorry, you said you would bring that to planning and zoning. For example, a parking change.
That would be a part of their plan.
The concept plan.
Yeah, all of that would be included in their concept plan, parking, setbacks, anything.
But the negotiation of it would not be taken to planning and zoning.
The entire thing would be taken to planning zoning, so we're going to work.
Concept plan, but not in the negotiation of what goes into the concept plan.
Correct.
You do that directly with the developer.
Correct, yes, so we would work with them to get to, uh, something that we feel comfortable would, would be accepted by planning and zoning. Then that goes to planning and zoning and if they have any changes, they can accept or reject the concept. And then it would come to you guys to, for the same thing. We're, we're only doing that and so. We're, the developers not having to come to P N Z, then go back and come to P N Z and then go back, we're going to try to work with them to get to a concept that. Makes the most sense for the community and then they make that decision with their approval for recommendation.
Are all of the deviations from code documented? In that concept plan that's presented?
Yes, we, that's what we would really be wanting to come to. Hit planning and zoning and say, these are, these are where they are varying and this is what we're getting in exchange. And then there, I believe there's some criteria, some additional criteria that they would look at, like a betterment for the, the community and the neighborhood and things like that.
He's quite a rigorous criterionist, you can see.
If there's. And in the past, we've had, pardon me, Sean.
Oh, you're fine.
Things come to, uh. That. Quite honestly. Don't fit, they, there are too many codes, too many ordinances that they just don't meet. And the commission will. Have no problem in rejecting it, we not yet. Remember what I say, is it good for Odessa? I want you to build. But I don't want you to hurt the city or the neighborhoods in the process of you building. And, and. Traditionally, staff has done a pretty good job of pointing out where. Issues conflict with codes and ordinances. Sometimes they. There's so many conflicts that it, it may have to go to B T A. And, and, uh. An educational process. To, to, for B T A to understand. Why, why these folks are there. Because it didn't go to. This group or that group because it's outside too many things.
Couple other things I'll just add is that, um. It won't prevent variances, it's allowing for variances in a way in exchange for, so, um. It, it won't, it won't stop them either, so. Um, with or without this, there's already a mechanism for people to come to us and say, the setback is ten and I would like it set. Or whatever the, whatever the setback is, but this does it in a way where they can do it on a, maybe a larger scale. And/or it allows for us to gain something from it. If you're wanting to, currently if you went through a variance, it's just a yes or no, you can get the variance or you don't get the variance. This allows for us to. Have something that's bettering the parcel, bettering the development, more than what our original and current process would allow for variances. And have, and allowing us to have our input. Yes, and I would say that that's definitely what, from what I heard from planning and zoning, that's what they appreciated the most out of this. Is that they got a, a say-so over it, so for the nineteen twelve building, for example, if. They want to, I believe it's, it's zoned as R three right now. So if they want to put multi-family there and they hit all the requirements, or maybe they have one variance that they take to, to, uh, B T A. That, that doesn't have to come, none of those questions or thoughts or what if we do this or that, none of that will come in front of. The concept plan as a whole would not come in front of planning and zoning today. So this allows them to have a little bit more, uh, involvement in the process. And they really seem to like that component of it.
Further questions? Further discussion? Want to do this?
If we try to understand that if you lay the question on the table, it, it's going to. Uh, defer. The vote on it to another date. If we choose to. Modify the ordinance. And discuss, uh, other things to add to the orders. Uh, what's going to be our process, what do we need to do?
Um, well, like Marty said, we would want, you guys would need to identify some changes that you would like P N Z to discuss. And then it'll go back to P N Z in May, which will be, is mid-May, so then it'll come back to planning and zoning on May twenty-seventh. Or come back to Board of Alderman on May twenty-seventh.
I'm trying to make that subsidiary motion and he's so keen to make it. I'm sorry. If then somebody wanted to make a motion other than moving to the second reading, that would be the time to make it. A motion to postpone or a motion to.
What was the word for sending?
I don't have anything to direct them to change on this first, but I, I don't, um. I mean, I'm hearing what you're saying about the acreage change, but I'm hearing that that really doesn't. I don't think this would be two acre versus twenty acre or the acreage. I'm, I'm hearing them saying that there's so many checks and balances and criteria that has to be matched, I don't think that's, in my opinion, I don't. I don't have any recommendations on that.
I, I think it's a lot of information to, um. What we get this Friday, it's a lot of information to look over, learn about if you, if you don't know about this particular topic. And, um, to me, it's a huge ordinance to put in place. I mean, I think this is, this is a good start and maybe a final product, I don't. I don't know if it is because I feel like maybe this.
Well, I feel like I have confidence in the planning and zoning commission that's been working on this for several, for a long time, so that I think. I mean, I think we need to give them, uh, they've done the hard work, so, um.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I agree, I'm not discounting their capability, but it's, sounds like it's new to you too.
This is new to the city.
New to the city or new to the planning?
A planned unit development is something new, it's a new concept we've never dealt with. And we tried to do the research, yeah, doesn't mean we're perfect at it, oh. Are we willing to take input? Always have, always will.
I moved the late question on the table. That we can figure it out later tonight.
Jeff can speak to that.
Yep.
Mayor, if, if it would help to generally your choices at this point are to.
I can hear you.
Generally, your choices would be to table the motion, uh, to a date certain. Uh, or, or to return it to the planning and zoning commission with instructions to be brought back, um. Trying to think, I, I haven't heard a lot of other choices from what's been said here. Or the third choice is to vote on the second read, so I guess those are the three choices. Return it for additional work, ask that it be postponed or, or tabled until another date to give everybody a chance to read it. And provide input and then at that meeting, they can decide, go forward or return it for additional work.
Section seventeen, lay the side temporarily, I moved, delayed the question on the table, you're saying is not valid?
Well, generally. Laying on the table, putting on the table means for today, you move it to later on in the day. But if you're, if you're taking it off, if you're, if you're disposing of the item. By moving it to another date, then you're, you're moving to postpone it or table it for a date certain. You're asking it to be brought back at another.
I want to move it to the date certain, we can move it to the next meeting.
You could, or you could move it to two meetings.
As he requested.
You could move it, I mean, you could move it however many, many, many meetings forward you want. Perhaps that's the, that's the beauty of it. And either way you want to do it, but those are the general choices, whatever you call it, you can move it to another date, you can vote today on the second reading. Or you can vote to send it back to planning and zoning for some additional work, but again. As the former chairman said, give them some instructions. Just sending it back with nothing, no instructions is, certainly you're right, but. As you've heard from the former chairman, it, it doesn't give them a lot to do or a lot to think about if they don't know what it is you need changed or.
I don't think we're prepared tonight to give them the instructions.
And that sounds like you want to move it to another, have it come back up, we'll basically suspend it at this point and the second reading will come up at a later meeting. And then you can. Make another motion then, or you can have the second meeting, the next meeting if you want, but I would, I would suggest that you. Let everybody know what date you're going to do that, so just putting it out on a general continuance, use the legal term.
No, it's available until the next meeting.
It sounds like you're just wanting some time for all of us to look at this and maybe bring it up at the next Board of Alderman, that would be.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you will have another Board of Alder persons meeting before we have planning and zoning.
That's right.
And then maybe if you guys have some directive, then.
Our next meeting will be the twelfth, the next board, planning and zoning is the fifteenth.
So I'll make a motion that we then, uh, move this item to our next Board of Alderman meeting on. May twelfth.
Tabled to May twelfth.
Tabled to May twelfth.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion to table to May twelfth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is it, is it tabled or postponed?
It's tabled, it's tabled.
It's, it, yeah, it's.
Tabled.
They're motion to postpone until May twelfth.
Okay.
Or the other way.
Okay, so we have our motion, we have our second. All in favor?
Who, I'm sorry, who seconded?
Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, five zero, motion is postponed until the next set, make one.
Okay.
And then there'll be no.
Resolution number twenty twenty five, so. Law State Consultants for Geotechnical Work Related to Railroad Committing as Part of the Martha Project. Discussion. No discussion?
I guess I'm gonna just maybe would like to, I, I've talked to Steph about it. And I was confused as to where this study was actually going to happen, thank you Marty. And Sean, exactly where it's.
Yep.
Can you tell us?
So where the, from the water tower, we're, we're. Upgrading the water line from, um, Box Trot, which is in Hunter's View all the way to the water tower. So this is where that line would cross the railroad tracks between, um, Gulf and the, the water tower.
And it's a maximum of fifty thousand, but we're hoping it doesn't get too close to that.
Correct.
And really, yeah. No option, it has to be done, right?
Correct. Yeah, we do not have an option here. The only other option, which we've discussed thoroughly with Darren and Jason, our engineer, is, um. The potential to like downsize the water line. But then we're putting in a brand new water line at twelve inches and a por- portion of it or a hundred and. Some odd feet are gonna be smaller and it, that just doesn't make any sense when we're spending this much money. On the project itself, over a million dollars.
For the discussion. I would take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve, there are continued technical. Report. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve. Our material. Have a motion, a second, all in favor? All yes? All in witness, revoked. I'm sorry.
No, he didn't.
Uh, just asking, yeah, I think you.
Okay, you didn't, you didn't hear me, okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve. All in favor? Five zero, resolution carries, thank you. All right, our final topic is, uh, discussion on these closed ordinance for outside wood boilers. And.
I, I like.
You like this one?
Yeah. It seems like. I mean, it, it all makes, it's what we talked about, um, the quality of air, you can't burn, you know, uh. Non, I mean, chemicals in the air, I, I like the part about that if your neighbor, if you're there. The height of it needs to be ten feet, but if you are next to, within three hundred feet of a. Another structure, it's gotta be above the roof. That's hard. I, I didn't mean to, I didn't. Who, and isn't it, if you've already got one, you have to do a re. Uh, you have to go in and get a re, a permanent side, or is.
All known about it, you have to register it. If I'm not mistaken, your technically grandfather, yeah.
Um, no.
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah, so, um, the section one, uh. Oh, I'm sorry.
So it does say that if, uh, there is a current owner of an outdoor wood boiler, that within the six, uh, within. With the passes, passage of this ordinance, they have sixty days, um, to come in and register. So, and they, they would need to be compliant as far as the stack, stacking of the.
So basically, they're not grandfathered, they have to come in and.
They are as far as really not having a permit.
Okay.
But they have to be.
But they have to, they have to meet state regulations.
Okay.
So they are not grandfathered in, they have to meet.
Yeah, that, we don't have grandfathered in, in the ordinance at all.
I was right, that's my bad.
Yeah, technically, they're not grand, grandfathered in, they do have to register, they do have to meet. All the state regulations for it.
My, my question or main question. In section six, or whatever. Setback and stack requirements, it says. Boilers shall be set back at least a hundred feet from any property line. By your seventy eight feet wide.
Yeah, we, we need, we do need.
How many yards in Odessa?
We do need to look at, um, the property line and the setbacks before I bring the, the entire final ordinance to you, as well as the zoning. So this will go in front of the planning commission as well first. And they come back to you, but, uh, we are still working on that, that's why it's highlighted. As far as what zoning we're going to.
Do you guys have any thoughts on the setbacks while we have you here? Right. One suggestion would be to just mirror the setback requirements of the zone that it's in.
Rose. Googling stuff, this, this is, this is a, if you call it a hot topic, um. It's the, they're not light. I mean, there's, there's, city, the city of Union has banned them completely. Rala has, uh, two pretty strict ordinances on the, um.
There's not very many states.
No, no, and because they're not really made for being in the city. I mean, that's. I, I don't think they're a bad thing at all, I mean, if you, if you, if you have some acres, whatnot, that, that'd be, you wanna eat, because. Insurance companies don't like, in, I don't think they even let you anymore, have, in northern stores. Uh, so this, this takes the place of it because it's outside, um. If you raise the stack, if you raise the stack up. If you did, you probably isn't town and you raised the stack, the smoke stack up. Then you have to figure out how you're gonna. How you're gonna, you know. Stabilize the dang thing, other than guy, guy wires, I don't know how you would do it. And then you have to be able to clean it out. Because it'll get full of grease oil. We had, we had a house set up one time and had a wood stove down in the basement and, uh. It's grease oil in your, in your flue is, is, is an issue, um. Apparently. The EPA has put regulations on, on these things. Going back to fifteen. Uh, I guess if you buy a new one. They actually have. By a way of putting it like catalytic converter on, on the smokestack. That, that meets EPA requirements. And these things ain't cheap.
I would, I would say, I just wanna say before you guys continue your discussion, this is kinda why we felt like. This should come to you before going to P and Z, so it didn't go to P and Z, then back to Board of Alderman, then back to P and Z, um. Cause we kind of, we felt like it could go either direction, we could do away or we could have this. If we're going to keep them, these are kinda some of the requirements that we would wanna put in place, but. The other option that you all have is like what you're saying and not allow them at all.
But, um, I don't know. What brought this up was a concern. A concern from a, a resident. Of the voter and everything. So, um, I, we know one property owner in, in the city limits that has it in.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna, you know, argue that.
Yeah.
These things would be.
I mean, could we put the ordinance? That. If there's some now, they have to be in compliance and then no more?
No.
Is this, is this going to then? Is this going to somewhere down the road? Create other? Like at, at the current moment, you can, uh. You can burn small brush bottom. At the current moment, you can burn your leaves. There's a lot of people that burn leaves. And that's a lot of smoke. I mean, are we gonna ban that?
Well, it's kind of a separate ordinance that we're looking at too, is the burning ordinance. But this is out, I would say that this is separate from that, that'd be a different area of the code that would regulate that. But we're, we don't have any intention of getting rid of burning yard waste. Within reason.
Reasons specific to outdoor wood boilers.
So what are you gonna do with these?
They're supposed to come to the firewood meeting, within sixty days of this passage, they would have to come up to code.
I know what it says. What are you gonna do about?
So at that point, if they don't come to compliance, it would be a code violation. No. So it'd be, I mean, our code, the way our codes work, it's, it's complaint based, so if we don't know that it, it's not, not possible for us to know. If and where every. Struck back, what every backyard looks like in Odessa, but. At the point that we have complaints, then we have to have an avenue to be able to do something about that.
So I wanna comment or make a comment on your comment about, well, you know, my yard's not a hundred feet, uh, you know. Maybe we need to look at reducing that, but I guess I'm looking at it as like. Maybe you don't have a big enough yard to have a boiler, you know, it. You, you can't, you couldn't put a boiler in, you know, let's just say, um, you know, one of these smaller lots, cause it's not.
Oh, I think, I think we need, I think we need an ordinance. That's, that's a good. We have, we need an ordinance.
I think what she's saying is maybe you can only have one. Yeah.
Because of the toxic. You know what I'm saying, maybe you don't, maybe you'd like to have one, but you don't meet the requirement because your yard just doesn't look so big enough. Just, you know. To make all those people, you know, your neighbors.
But when you live in town, you sh- you should. Be. A little considerate of your neighbors.
Yeah.
You should.
Why we have city codes?
So maybe we can have planning and zoning look at this for us and these setbacks looks to be like the only really good beauty that we got.
I just found that one be, there could be no way anybody could have one. Oliver, Oliver Wilson hasn't had enough.
So these last anywhere from fifteen to thirty years, and whether it's a. New one that's put, put in or an existing one. Should they have periodic inspections by the fire department?
We'd have, I mean, that would be something that the fire department would need to.
If the state and federal laws require that, then, because they have, the state, the state and federal laws is what regulates it, we just will prevent, give a permit for it. But they have to meet the state and federal laws, then it's out of our hands. So if they do require the fire department to inspect and, and that, they will need to meet that requirement.
When you get a permit? When someone comes in for a permit, does someone go out and check it then?
There'll be an inspection with the permit, yes. Yeah, and it has to meet the EPA standards and, you know, clean wood, clean fuel, everything.
For the bill?
So, very agreement, we want some kind of ordinance or we want to ban it all together?
For certification.
And the only thing we're gonna send it over to.
By what you do, somebody's not gonna have, somebody's not gonna be happy.
Oh, I agree.
Other input?
For one, we're not gonna let any more, right? I mean. Put that in there, like, no one else can have one?
Well, that was an option that we could.
If that's your direction, we're open to whatever you guys wants to do.
We should say.
If you already got one. Fine, but we're not allowing it.
We're not allowing anymore.
Or is that, and that factor?
I would, uh, if the stack has to be above roof level as they're saying. I would have a concern, it's proximity to power line, that or that, and those kinds of things. So because that smoke would be coming out pretty condensed, close to. I don't know if there's anything state, I haven't looked at this, but that would be something I would give some with. Well, that'd be.
So if we were to go that route, that, you know, keep, keep what we've got, you can't allow, you know, more allowed after, you know, point. We, we have to make the current ones come up to some kind of code?
That's what she's saying, within sixty days.
Yeah, yeah. That's how it reads right now. And then, it doesn't, does it read that there's no more allowed after?
No.
No.
I didn't think that was in there.
I would be in favor of that.
I kinda agree with you. Cause there's just so much, the power lines, the stacks, that.
Moratorium necessarily made in town. I mean, they're not.
Okay, so I'm reading the consensus, consensus of the board is to direct the, the administration to refine the ordinance. Improve the setback situation and they get no more boilers. After those that have to be product to code. Or run to code. Is that correct?
Are there any zones that you feel like they should be, well, I guess moving forward, it might be better, never mind. Do we need to do a zoning?
Yeah.
Why does it need to have a zoning?
Especially when you say there's.
Yeah, it's not.
Allowed, not liked.
Yeah. Because you live, you live in town.
Maintain but not replace.
This is not a boiler thing, but, uh. Used to have a neighbor. He's a old neighbor, he moved away, uh, he had a, I guess it's his chimney. Okay, and his backyard, he loved white period hardwood. He just, you know, made his best. Okay, so every time he did, the smoke would come up and the smoke would go over, the smoke would come right into my house. He also liked to talk on his phone till two of them.
I think what started this was a citizen complaint about one that is currently, and it was.
Do you have any issues with?
Yes, and she did.
That's one of the things, when you, when you Google it, that's, that's why they're getting, they're not buying.
That's why we're even talking about, right? I like the idea, like, you know, bring the ones up, stack to code or, and, um.
Well, we've reworked it and.
One of the things we did discuss too was, since it's. It's, like Jeff said, it'd be like a moratorium moving forward, um. There's no point in having specific prohibited zones, so we'll remove that section.
In further commentary or discussion?
And because of that, it wouldn't need to go to planning and zoning.
Our next scheduled meeting is Monday, May twelfth, seven PM, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
The motion is second. All in.